Welcome to our special council meeting of January 13th, 2025. This meeting has been called for the following specific purposes. Consideration of the mayor's 2024 budget. Under council meeting rules, no other new business can be considered at this special meeting. And I would note for this meeting, it just continues over the period that we consider the budget and we will break the meeting, but there is, as you know, multiple sessions planned. As we begin today's meeting, I see all members present except for councillor Keenan, who I believe will be joining online shortly.
And councillor Maderos is online as well.
And councillor Maderos is online too. Okay. We're now at item two, approval of agenda. We have a motion moved by councillor Santos, second by councillor Vicente, to approve the agenda. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Motion carries. We're now at item three, declarations of interest under the municipal conflict of interest act. Does any member have a declaration of pecuniary interest under the municipal conflict of interest act for any matter to be considered on today's agenda? Seeing none, the clerk will so note. Okay, this takes us to the staff presentation of the budget, but before we have the staff presentation. So if there's a municipal conflict of interest act for today's agenda, you can declare it, but if there's a specific section that you wanted to tear a conflict on, if you have a family member, you can declare it at the time of that section.
Turn the mic on.
So I'd say thank you for raising that, the clerk will so note that, and then at time of the bylaw budget, you can note that again. Thank you councillor Fertini. Okay, before we have the staff presentation, there's a few comments I wanted to start off with. This is year two of the new provincial legislation where we have the budget prepared by the mayor along with city staff. And there's a 30-day period for the adoption of this, and I encourage council to use as much or as little as that time as they believe necessary. We have scheduled meetings. There's 30 days from once the budget is introduced. You'll see the same process unfold in other areas, Mississauga, that their budget in December, Toronto is launching their budget process today. But during this 30-day period, we'll schedule as many meetings to maximize the opportunity for questions and public participation as there's interest for. And I would say that's why we schedule the meeting right away, to make sure that we use every one of these 30 days available to you if needed. At the same time, I have my evenings booked every night with public town halls, and I want to thank all councillors for booking town halls in their areas. I think we're the only city that does community coffee chats in every corner of our city, and we have a tele-town hall tonight too, so there's going to be an inordinate amount of public engagement, and that's the way we like it, to make sure that everyone that wants to have their voice heard in the budget process has the ability to do so. This is your time as council to ask as many questions as you like. I've had the opportunity over the last six months to ask endless questions. I know committee chairs have had the opportunity to help shape their respective budgets and ask many questions, but for committees you're not on, this may be the first time you're looking at it, so take advantage of this time with staff. All commissioners are ready to go with their budgets, but if you want to vary the order, if there's an area you're more interested in that you believe needs more time, go ahead and do so. We are flexible to make sure that this time is as productive as possible. There may be more time allocated for one area, and you may not need that time. There may be time in one area that we haven't added enough time, and you may have a ton of questions, and so just know the key part of this is we're going to be flexible to make sure that we can answer the questions that are before us. You got a question councillor Santos?
Thank you. Through you, through you, mister chair, sorry, I'm just waiting for the mic. Is it possible to move community services before transit for presentations this morning? Just because I have a group of students who are coming in for community services related stuff and would love for them to hear that community services, if, just to alter the order, that's all.
Okay, well, maybe after I finish the remarks and we have the staff presentation, and then we can have a council conversation on the order that you want to go, but the staff presentation will take a bit of time, and there may be general questions on the staff presentation. I would want to say at the outset that this is a challenging year, there are financial pressures on the city. You know, you look at the provincial downloading of planning to the city that is sort of halfway there. We don't have the tax points, but we have some of the additional responsibilities. There's been construction inflation that we've seen, a shortage of labor, more expensive product that's affected public works, and of course, we have new labor agreements that put a challenge on city finances. And so, you know, we have been trying at City Hall to be as frugal as possible and make sure that we have the financial capacity to afford the collective agreements that we have. But when you look at all those together in totality, you know, there's many aspects of the budget that are already set because of those legal obligations. So we're going to do our best to make sure we find savings where we can, and if members of council have ideas of where to find savings, please propose them. If there are areas that you believe that there is a key service the city needs to add, that you believe is necessary, then please put that idea forward. You know, I really want this to be a team approach, and I know that the provincial legislation doesn't necessarily set it up that way, but that's the way we're going to approach it in the city of Brampton. But I want all members of council to think of the fact that it's a tough, it's a tough year for the city, but it's a tough, it's a tough time and challenging time for residents too. Think of that senior citizen on a fixed income, that single parent struggling to make ends meet. And just like we're seeing inflation, families are seeing inflation, the cost of groceries, the cost of fuel, just the cost of everyday life. And so we have a big responsibility here to balance providing great public service at the same time being mindful of the weight that we put on the backs of residents to afford the great city that we're all building together. So on that note, I'm going to introduce Mark Maderos, our chief budget officer, who is a wizard, I find, with information about the city's finances, and Nash Damer, our treasurer, they have put thousands of hours into this budget, and they do so every year, and we're grateful to have their service in the city of Brampton. And so Mark will hand it over to you for the presentation, and then we'll go back to council on the way you want to attack budget deliberations.
So thank you Mayor Brown. As you mentioned, it's been a long road to get here. We kicked off this process in July, and there's been thousands of hours and hundreds of staff that have been involved in putting this together, so just want to say a big thank you to all staff, management teams, the senior leadership team, C A O, our treasurer, Nash Damer, and the finance team, our budget office, and most importantly, mayors and members of council that have provided input and guided us to where we are today. Go to the next slide. So today kicks off the budget deliberations. We'll also be holding telephone town hall this evening, where members of the public and the community can call in and ask questions. We're having ward coffee chats throughout the week. The council deliberations that we're doing today will carry on throughout this week, and we have a business virtual roundtable tomorrow morning. Next slide, please. So some of the big items in this budget, as the mayor mentioned, 2.9%. This is compared to all of our peers, very low. We're among the lowest in the GTA, and we have been for over six years now. The city of Brampton on average has a tax increase of 1.2% since 2019, which is by far the lowest in the GTA, and considerably lower than anybody else with a transit system. So the mayor mentioned affordability is a key lens, it's the primary lens that we look at when we're developing a budget. We understand what's happening in the community with the housing affordability and the economic situation, so every dollar is challenged before presenting it to you. This budget does include another $10 million to support the previous $10 million for the TMU medical school. We do have $81 million already put away in the P Memorial Reserve for the second hospital, and this budget does include another $4.9 million contribution to continue to support our hospital. Transit, 52,000 new service hours in growth, and this budget also provides some funding substitution for the $300 million third transit facility. There's significant investments in community building and living spaces, so recreation centers, outdoor ice rinks, cricket dome, recreation programming, so considerable investment in parks and recreation. Next slide, please. So again, let it mention about the tax comparators. On a per capita basis, the city of Brampton is quite low, at $1,400 per person, and it's taken quite an effort to be able to reach 2.9% in this environment with inflation, but I think we're proud of the work we've done. Next slide, please. So $1.4 billion budget is what's proposed here in 2025. $1 billion in operating and $360 million in capital. 70% of the operating budget is comprised of four key areas. We have transit at 246 million, community services including fire at 240, public works at 105 million, and our contributions to reserves at 147. So those four key areas are the primary investments that the billion dollars is supporting. On the capital side, 73% of the $368 million budget is allocated to parks, roads, transit, our downtown revitalization and Riverwalk, including recreation centers. Next slide, please. Next, two more slides actually. Yeah, there you go. So the municipal act states that municipalities are not permitted to run a deficit, so each year as we develop a budget, we must identify the funding sources that we're going to use to be able to pay for the expenses that we are proposing. So here you can see a breakdown of those two items. We have expenditures of $1 billion funded by funding of a billion. On the expenditure side, salary wages and benefits make up the most, the biggest bucket at 56%, followed by contributions to reserves, which demonstrates the city's commitment to maintaining and growing our infrastructure. On the funding side, municipalities don't have many tools, and that's demonstrated here as we have 61% of our funding comes from property taxes and 34% comes from user fees. There has been a shift. Last year we were at 59% of salaries and wages, so we've actually brought that down to 56%. And property taxes were at 64% last year, so we brought that down to 61, and a large reason for that is the new ASC business, which brings additional significant user fee, or service charge revenue. Next slide, please. Uh, next slide, please. So the proposed twenty twenty five budget recommends an increase of a hundred and eighteen million dollars or twelve point nine percent. Um, of that amount, thirty five percent or forty one million is required uh from the existing property tax base, while sixty five percent is supported through additional revenue growth, which is uh half of the seventy one million is uh the A S E revenue and then we have revenue growth in transit, recreation and planning. Um, assessment growth uh unfortunately has only come in at four point five million and we'll get into that further on the next slide, please. So as you can see here, a history of of assessment growth, um, beginning in twenty nineteen, we've been hovering around uh a one percent uh increase in assessment growth. Um, Brampton's peak growth period from from the early two thousands up until twenty eighteen um has concluded as we built out most of our greenfield. So we can expect going forward that future assessment costs are going to be more in line with what we've seen around one percent as opposed to um the prior twenty years. So this this really illustrates the level of funding that the municipal act provides for us to to grow um and how it is not sustainable. So, you know, it 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 really emphasizes the importance of us having to advocate to other levels of government for a a sustainable municipal funding framework uh because the assessment growth we're receiving is just not sufficient to fund a mature, growing and intensifying municipality. Next slide, please. So this is a breakdown of the forty one million dollars in property tax dollars. Um, so it is a two point nine percent increase on the average residential home, uh, which translates to approximately a hundred ninety four dollars per year. That's sixteen dollars a month. The biggest component of this is base operating inflation as as we're seeing in the community, um, which is comprised of compensation adjustments and provisions, uh, our new winter control contract uh and repairs and maintenance to our our transit vehicles. That's seventy percent of the forty one million dollars. Um, next is the special purpose levies, which is our infrastructure infrastructure and transit levies. Critical investments that are required to to be able to grow and maintain our our assets into the future. Um, we then have newer enhanced services, uh, which is largely comprised of the fifty two thousand service hour increase in transit along with parks beautification and expansion of corporate events. Provincial impacts are the impacts of the recent minimum wage uh increase. And then we have financing, uh, four hundred ninety three thousand dollar repayment for a seven point five million dollar loan from F C M for the zero carbon retrofit of the Susan Fennel Sportsplex. So that makes up the forty one million. Uh, next slide, please. So the twenty twenty five proposed budget includes um one hundred eighty seven uh new staff. Um, this is primarily driven through transit. Um, we have a new crew of firefighters, uh, twenty six staff for the enforcement stabilization model, uh, thirty one staff for the A S E uh uh function and eighteen staff through planning. So a large part of the process of us asking uh or or evaluating staff requests was to find as many non-tax or alternative sources as possible. And as you can see here, we were able to identify uh seven point three million of other sources uh other than taxes to bring the net cost down to twelve point two million for the total. Next slide, please. So this this shows the residents, you know, we collect for the city of Brampton for all services. The the bills provide one point four billion dollars um for the city, the region and the school boards. The city collects forty percent of that bill and the average bill is sixty five hundred dollars. And that is on a twenty sixteen residential assessment, uh, five hundred and fifty three thousand dollars. So quite outdated, but it's really just a distribution mechanism that um the assessment value. So um it doesn't really change even if it were to go up because everybody would would typically go up uh in equal. Um, next slide, please. So of that forty cents, uh, this shows you where where the the funding goes to. Uh, twenty five percent approximately is invested in capital infrastructure, again signifying the critical importance of of the impact of maintaining our assets. Uh, seven point eight cents uh would be transit and fire equally, uh, support, followed by public works, recreation, parks, enforcement and library. Next slide, please. So on the capital side, uh, the three hundred and sixty eight million dollars is broken down thirty seven percent for public works, twenty seven percent for community services and seventeen percent for transit, followed by corporate support services. Um, the capital budget makes considerable investments in community uh living. Seventy million dollars in parks, sixty three, sixty five million dollars in roads, sixty two million in transit, thirty eight million in downtown revitalization and Riverwalk and thirty five million in recreation centers. And you can see here that the funding breakdown is uh federal provincial grants and tax based reserves and development charges. Um, on the federal provincial grants where this budget includes funding um from the I S I P, uh, investing in Canada infrastructure program for transit. Uh, we have the Housing Accelerator Fund, we have the Building Faster Fund, we have um some that I had off the top of my head, oh, the twenty nine point seven million for the Riverwalk. Uh, that was recently announced, that's also included there, that's part of the grants. Um, on the debt side, we have, as I mentioned, the seven point five million for the Susan Fennel Sportsplex. We're also proposing to uh borrow uh fifty million dollars against the development charge reserves for transit um to uh cash flow for their facility, the new facility. Next slide, please. So considerable effort was made this year to uh extend our forecast from a three year budget to a five year. So we're proud to be able to provide um members of the public and council uh longer uh view of the future infrastructure needs. Half of the city's five year capital investments are projected to be funded through public works and engineering for road expansion and facility construction, uh, while twenty three percent is projected to go to to transit. I think an important um item we identified through this budget is back in twenty two thousand and six, we began to significantly increase our investment in buses. We were growing buses significantly. Those buses are now coming due and will come due over the next five to ten years in much greater quantities than we've had in the past. So um you'll see transit become a a bigger part of our infrastructure as we now have to uh repair or replace um a a larger fleet. Next slide, please. So this um again, you know, I mentioned several times contributions to reserves and our our levies. Uh, they're a critical piece to fund uh this organization. Um, since twenty nineteen, we've effectively, assuming this proposed budget is approved, uh, we will have effectively doubled our contributions to reserves. Uh, the twenty five increase includes eleven point four million dollars in in levies for infrastructure and transit and one point four for um stormwater charge, which results in a ten percent increase this year. Next slide, please. And just wanted to end with this, that um, you know, this this term of council has made tremendous progress in in community building through strategic investments. Over the last two years, we've approved one point four billion dollars in capital programs. Um, and we're looking forward to putting those those programs shovels in the ground this year. Uh, and that includes things like Embolton, the new transit facility and Riverwalk. This budget builds on that and and makes new investments in things like outdoor ice rinks, cricket dome, um, and the downtown revitalization. So with that, uh, just like to thank you for the opportunity to to speak today and be happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Okay, and so, uh, thank you, um, Mark. If there's questions for Mark specifically, you can ask him now, but knowing you're going to have the opportunity to dig into any of the departmental uh budgets when the commissioner presents, I think they'd be best suited to answer specific questions about their department. But if there's questions about the overall um presentation, uh, Mark will be available now, but also throughout this thirty day um budget process. I I should also add, I didn't mention in my initial remarks that the clerk has been populating people's calendars and so it says on the screen, you know, budget deliberations over the next week. It actually goes well beyond that and you'll have been seeing uh meeting invites sent to your calendar. And if we um need to use those times, we will. And if if not, like last year, we can relinquish some of those times. I'd also be remiss not to thank Counselor Visante as well because at every meeting we've had over the last six months, um, he's been attending them um as vice chair of this of this committee. So thank you, Counselor uh Visante. Are there any questions for Mark before we have a discussion about how we're going to um the order we want to go? Seen no immediate questions. Mark, uh, don't sit too tight, I'm sure there'll be lots of questions to come. Um, but can I have a motion to receive Mark's presentation? Uh, moved by Counselor Barosak and by Counselor Visante, um, all those in favor, motion carries. And if I could ask you, that presentation can be sent to members of council and posted on our city website um for residents interested in the overall um finances. It is, I think, important for residents to know what portion of the property tax bill is within city control and the areas um that it goes. And, you know, hearing grants and contributions from other levels at 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 two percent um really speaks to the advocacy work that we have to do. This is not sustainable on behalf of property um taxes, the amount of areas that cities are now expected to be involved. Um, and I know Counselor Visante sitting on A M O and Counselor Santos sitting on um F C M are actively raising those campaigns, being organized by those two advocacy organizations as all members of council do as well. So now we're at at four point two, which is departmental presentations. Um, Counselor Santos has requested community services first, but I'm going to ask other members of council if they have any preference on the order that we approach this. Okay, I don't see any other um preferences. I would note, like I said, the key word in this is flexible to make sure that every question is is you have the ability to ask. We do community services today and it'll come to you. You know what, there's something I noticed, I want to ask that question two weeks from now, we'll bring community services back. So we start with community services. It does not mean this is the only day for community services. Obviously, this is something that affects all our awards. So Commissioner Boyce, you may not have been expecting to present.
Sorry.
But uh you're on the hot seat now.
Sorry. Thank you, Mayor and and excuse me, Mayor. Happy day for some lack of this. But I'm very pleased to present the twenty twenty five community service department project.
I I think we're having a hard time. We can't hear. Yeah.
Mark, turn it off, there we go, is that better?
I'll have to hear my team presentations.
Uh, mov- moving on to our departmental overview, the community service department directly contributes to building and maintaining a healthy, active and safe community through our divisions of parks, maintenance, recreation, fire, cultural services, community safety, well-being and for the purposes of this budget, service Brampton. Although service Brampton is now moved to corporate services, that organizational structure change was after the budget was prepared and animal services is now a part of our community services team. Next slide, please. Our budget goals are focused on quality and accessible services to the community through innovation partnerships and strategic opportunities while ensuring fiscal responsibility and enhancing operational efficiencies. And these goals really emphasize the importance of healthy, active lifestyles through parks and recreation, community safety through strong partnerships, a thriving arts and culture community, progressive emergency services and a responsive and efficient first point of contact for our residents. Next slide, please. The diverse scope of programs and services delivered by our team results in a variety of budget drivers and pressures. For example, a rapidly growing community and high demand for our community services and spaces along with shifting societal needs and requests present challenges. Further, we must maintain and modernize our facilities and public spaces to ensure accessible and reliable infrastructure. We are also impacted by climate change, which results in longer, hotter, wetter summers and increased parks maintenance costs. We've also seen recent changes to the presumptive firefighter, P T S D and cancer legislation that translates into higher unforeseen and unpredictable W S I B costs. Our team is faced with the need to respond to a number of urgent situations that transcend all orders of government uh for things like encampments. And finally, we relentlessly strive to be fiscally efficient, operationally effective and sustainable. Next slide, please. In terms of our operating budget, community services has proposed two hundred and forty million dollars of expenditures, offset by approximately fifty two million dollars in revenue, resulting in a net operating impact of a hundred and eighty eight million. This is a variance of approximately six million from twenty twenty four or a three point three percent increase. Nearly eighty percent of these expenses are used for wages and benefits, with the remainder for materials, repairs, utilities, fuel, et cetera. And you'll notice our revenue projected for twenty twenty five is significantly higher from twenty twenty four at fifty two million predominantly through increased user fees and more user fees in recreation. Next slide, please. So there are a number of operating budget highlights and we'll start with parks. We are expanding our successful twenty twenty four pilot parks beautification program to clean and preserve our parks with one million dollars allocated or one hundred thousand dollars per ward. We're going to see enhanced contract administration and attention to grass cutting to help keep our parks and open spaces well maintained. We'll be adding dedicated project managers to effectively deliver the various projects that you're going to see in our capital overview, which totals almost one hundred million dollars. And finally, we're going to add staff to support the growth and preservation of the urban forest canopy. Next slide. In recreation, uh, one of the the big highlights in this year's budget is the free old uh older adult programming for those seniors sixty five plus. And Brampton really is a a leading city that supports our active seniors and we've seen significant uptake with the free seventy plus program, which will now be expanded to seniors that are sixty five plus. Also, the revitalized Ballmoreo Recreation Center will open in February on Family Day and the Rosalie Tennis Facility will enjoy its first full year of operation. We will also see the planned opening of Century Gardens Youth Hub and increased programming at Susan Fennel Youth Hub, which are two key facilities that support our youth. Next slide, please. Oh, and before uh before I mention that, I also want to note the addition of the C A A center to our recreation portfolio as well for the first full year of operation. Fire and emergency services will be adding twenty four firefighters to support emergency response coverage due to city growth and increased emergency responses. And later in twenty twenty five, Chief Ruler is going to bring back an updated fire master plan as our previous one expired and we expect there'll be a projected need to add additional crews in the coming years. Fire will continue to leverage prevention and education strategies involving all staff and resources for the R R L program that will include the distribution of nearly two thousand smoke alarms to residents uh across the city in the R R L program. Lastly, there will be significant efforts to meet the fastly approaching twenty twenty six and twenty twenty eight provincial training standards that require significant hours and funds to attain. Next slide, please. In cultural services and as endorsed by council earlier this year, there's two hundred fifty thousand dollars added to support the not-for-profit community through the Advanced Brampton Fund, bringing it to a total of one point seven five million dollars this year. Also was endorsed by council earlier this year, there's an additional two hundred fifty thousand allocated to the Brampton Arts Organization to continue support of the arts and artists across the city. We've also undertaken operational efficiencies to create two new positions uh focused on attracting and retaining diverse audiences within our theaters and supporting the development of a variety of community-focused cultural programs. And lastly, our community safety team will be embarking on year two of the Neighborhood Association Program and continue implementation of the twenty twenty two to twenty twenty seven Community Safety Action Plan. Excellent. Moving on to the capital budget, twenty twenty five is going to see significant investments in community services with over ninety eight million dollars added allocated. Approximately eighty million of that is for parks and recreation projects and eighteen million for fire and emergency services. Approximately sixty percent of the capital program is funded through development charges, twenty four percent via the Canada Community Building Fund or the the former gas stacks and the remainder through tax reserves, grants and cash in lieu of parkland. Next slide, please. Twenty twenty five, as as I mentioned, with respect to parks, will see a number of exciting projects. To help address the massive demand for cricket, in the cricket capital of Canada, twenty three million dollars is allocated for the construction of the Winterized Ernst Cliff Cricket Dome. And we're also going to see nine point eight million for the lighting of five senior and four youth or modified cricket fields. Would you like me to let everybody come in? Okay, fourteen million dollars will be used to construct the Cassie Campbell Field Hockey Okay, $14 million will be used to construct the Cassie Campbell Field Hockey Dome and another $14 million used to construct the Gore Meadows Community Park, which will have three lit cricket fields, nine tennis courts, six of those being domed, and six pickleball courts. There will be significant upgrades to 24 community playgrounds, where the city will replace eight with full replacements, and 16 sand or mulch playgrounds will be converted to rubber surfacing as part of our overall seven-year program to convert all sand and malt and rubber, uh, sand and mulch playgrounds to rubber. We also see in the heavily used turf fields that Creditview Sandalwood replaced and Cassie Campbell Field Hockey Turf will be replaced, along with a new splash pad at Century Gardens. Next slide, please. Continuing with park projects, we have two new outdoor rinks planned. Those will be constructed at Save Max Rec Center and Sandalwood Park. We have $3 million to finalize construction of our first outdoor park workspace and first paddle court at Torbram Sandalwood Adventure Park. And for those that haven't looked up paddle, P-A-D-E-L, I suggest you Google it. It is the fastest-growing sport in the world and going to be coming to Brampton very soon. We have $5 million allocated for parks enhancements to add various amenities at parks across the city, and that is divided by 500,000 per ward. Finally, two exciting projects will be the revitalization of Ching Park, which includes a new splash pad, updated skate park and playground, and new track, which will be completed by 2027, along with a $2 million investment at Peel Village Golf Course to extend cart paths, replace irrigation, and ensure it remains one of the, the best local golf facilities around. Next slide, please. In Recreation Centers, 2.8 million of indoor and outdoor equipment upgrades are planned, including a new gym floor at Susan Fennel Rec Center, indoor arena fans in several facilities to keep sports users and camp attendees cool, new gymnastics equipment at the heavily-used Ken Giles Rec Center, upgraded lighting at the Ching Tennis Bubble, and outdoor rink upgrades at Gore Meadows. We also have $1 million that we require to proactively maintain our facilities through our Recreation Preventive Maintenance Program. Next slide, please. For Fire and Emergency Services, over $15 million is required to purchase four pumpers and two aerials to maintain a reliable fleet of frontline emergency response apparatus. We also require $645,000 to meet our various legislated health and safety standards for firefighter equipment, including the purchase of 158 sets of bunker gear, hoses, and ladders. We're going to upgrade our 911 system to meet the CRTC mandate for next-generation 911 by, through the use of 1.1 million. And finally, $645,000 will be put towards the purchase, purchase of various mobile communications equipment for our 911 staff. Next slide, please. In Cultural, uh, in Cultural Services, we plan on investing $152,000 in preventive maintenance work at our various theaters. Service Brampton is going to require $100,000 to support an operational review and support the previous council direction from earlier in 2024. And lastly, our Community Safety and Wellbeing Team will use $550,000 to undertake an innovative risk intervention and response pilot program to ensure dedicated resources are available to mitigate the impact of encampments and public spaces throughout the city. Next slide. Uh, and just, uh, closing with the referred matters, there's two Cultural Services reports that will be before council later in Q1. And the Parks Beautification Matter will be considered here before council as it's in the operating budget. Next slide. And with that, I would just like to thank Mayor and Council for your support all year and to our staff across all the different divisions of Community Services. They do some incredible work and I'm surprised and reminded of it almost every day. And I really want to thank them for everything they do. With that, I'm happy to take questions.
Um, Councilor Santos is on the board, and I believe you have an announcement to start off with.
Yes. Just waiting for the mic. It's not working. Okay, perfect. Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. Thank you very much, Commissioner Boyes, for the presentation for Community Services. And before I go into just a couple of questions and comments, I think we've hit a world record in terms of the most number of young people attending a budget meeting ever. Um, I'd just like to introduce some of the incredible students in the ward that I represent from Saint Jean Vani, uh, Vianni in Ward Five. And I want to give a very special shout out to a, a couple of people. First of all, Jacob LaMonica, who is the inspiration behind having these young people join us for the budget today. And a quick story about Jacob. So Jacob approached me, I think Ed and Angelo must have been the summer or fall of this year, Jacob, or last, it's summer, spring. Spring, spring of 2024, with an idea on how to improve his own playground in his community called Francis H. Taylor Park. Now, not only did Jacob have a meeting with me at the park and playground with, uh, with Angelo, but he came with a proposal of all the pictures and ideas and research of what he wanted in that park. And obviously, I kept in touch with Jacob and worked with park staff to incorporate some of that feedback. Um, and so Jacob, because of your young engagement, um, not only have you improved your situation in your community and your local park, which is why I'm happy we're talking about community services in the budget today, but also arranged for the rest of your students to participate in this process as well. So that being said, the first question to the commissioner is, is Francis H. Taylor Park playground replacement in the 2025 budget?
Very, uh, through the mayor, very happy to report, yes, it is. It's, uh, one of our playgrounds that will be replaced.
Awesome. So thank you, Jacob, for all of your advocacy. My next acknowledgement, um, coincidentally enough, um, my nephew attends this school and is present here as well. So Elias Yera is here as well, Elias. And my cousin, who's, who works with York Regional Police, is volunteering today. So quite perfect timing because we're talking about emergency response increases and the impact on your property tax bill, cousin, in the future. So, um, I want to say acknowledge all of you, thanks for coming. The budget is the most exciting piece of council, just so you know. Um, and to the commissioner and the entire team of Community Services and to the mayor, my colleagues, I'm very proud of the work that we do. Um, you know, as, as Chair of Community Services, very proud of the work we do in arts and culture, in sports and recreation, in fire and emergency services, incredible work in community safety with respect to the encampments. And I know Councilor Pulashy has a question on the, on the budget for encampments, just a heads up on that. Um, and we are really giving residents a way to stay healthy, active, safe, but also engaged in arts and culture to maintain a vibrant community. So super proud of the work that Commissioner Boyes and the team over here do in the city of Brampton. I don't have questions right now, I know some of my colleagues do. I've already asked my questions to, uh, the commissioner and staff through our various updates and, and briefings. Uh, but I want to say, uh, congratulations and thank you for all of your work.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, uh, Councilor Santos. And for, and for the students watching today, know that if you live in Brampton, we all work for you too. So you don't need to be 18 to have input in the budget. Anyone that wants to have input in the budget can. And if you learn about something that you think we're, need to do more of or less of in the city of, of Brampton, uh, let us know and, uh, that your voice matters too. Um, over to Councilor Pulashy.
Thank you very much. Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you to, um, Commissioner Boyes. Thank you, Commissioner. Um, just a couple of questions, uh, related to, as we just got off of, uh, the region last week, we were talking about the three areas, uh, the funding sources from, uh, other levels of government for homelessness, for encampments. So I guess my question is, there's the 550,000 in the budget for the encampments. Um, are we going after, uh, the region to recoup that money? There's not a lot of dollars, um, at the region, but there is one fund, 20 million, I believe, across Ontario that I'm sure Brampton deserves its definite fair share of that. So I want to make sure that we're recouping that dollar amount as, um, encampments and homelessness is, um, is a regional.
Through the mayor, yes, we had, um, I'm going to say roughly 300,000 costs incurred last year related to clearing encampments. So we'll be able to go after that money as well. I know Resmin is actively working on it. I know the mayor and, and yourselves and Councilor Santos have all supported us going forward because the city certainly incurs those costs of clearing those spaces on our land. So yes, that, that is planned.
Okay, so, um, just for your knowledge then, the 330 were, um, I, I think you had mentioned it was 270 last week at the region, regardless what the actual number is. Uh, we're still looking to, we're looking to recoup that before the March deadline, but, um, of one of those streams. But for the other streams, I just want to make sure that we're, we're going, we're actively pursuing, um, recouping that because I'm sure, uh, the mayor will mention again, when it was announced by the province, it was stated that the municipalities will be made whole. So.
Through the mayor, we, we have a very detailed, um, collection of all the costs we have. So we will go through that, we'll work with government relations and any of yourselves as well to make sure that any of the grant streams that we go after to recoup all those costs.
Okay, perfect. Um, so just received the binder Friday, um, tried to cram a little bit into this weekend. So I will have questions later on. I will ask, um, more specifics about 311. And if you want to give those specifics now, I'm happy to hear and listen to what, what's coming up with 311 and also community safety. From my understanding, let's jump to community safety. From my understanding, um, what, what's the, um, compliment ask? How many people?
For community safety, there's a million dollars of capital funds requested.
How many people are you asking for?
There is, uh, I'd have to check with Resmin. I believe there's three that are capital funded.
How many openings, uh, current openings do you have?
In community safety?
Yeah.
I believe zero right now.
Zero. What was the request, what was the ask last year?
Last year, we added, I believe, one additional staff, and I might ask Resmin to clarify that. Two, two last year.
Okay. But there's three in this one. Are they full-time?
They are, they would be contract full-time staff.
Contract full-time?
Contract full-time.
Okay. Okay, I'll go back to 311. Can, um, can we, uh, dive into that a little bit, or do we want to put that?
Yeah, happy to take some questions, maybe between myself and Alex or Roma, we can sort that out.
Okay, so we all know what the issues with 311, um, have been. Um, I recently had, uh, made a couple inquiries to, on the 311 app? No, I made the phone call and then they texted me back about some issues on, um, on my street. And it was a month to the day later when I got, when I received a resolution, when I see, when I received the text back from 311 saying that it was, it was resolved, which didn't tell me anything, but first time ever kind of hearing that. Usually, from the resident's point of view, is they're being told, at least what they're telling us, is they're being told that, um, it's, it automatically gets, gets resolved and only because we have no officers to go out to, to investigate or to, um, uh, write any tickets. It's usually parking concerns more, more so. And then we're also noticing, um, not a lot of winter issues this year, which is, uh, good so far. But a lot of, um, parking on the road, uh, during winter events and parking on the road during, um, uh, garbage pickups. Uh, so a lot of complaints coming in about, uh, garbage, garbage containers not getting picked up, which the region is phenomenal at going back out and getting those containers. But they shouldn't have to, that's an extra cost. Um, and that's because people are continuing to park on the road overnight where they shouldn't be. People should know by now certainly that they're not allowed to park on the road when it's garbage night pickup. They're not allowed to park on the road during a winter storm event. But I guess this, we're, we're still working with 311 to get that clear communication and with enforcement services as well. So what's coming down the pipeline? How fantastic is this budget for 311 and, um, how the residents are going to benefit from it?
So through the, uh, through the chair, Councilor Pulashy, there's extensive work being done on a, a full end-to-end solution on looking at exactly what you're talking about. Uh, that work has been started. Uh, the budget, uh, that's being presented for 311 isn't significant in terms of the increase, but there are cost-saving measures that we're looking at as well. Um, to those points, we're looking at a strategy that you'll be informed on more and what changes will be looked at, including, um, introducing innovative technologies as well, like AI and other solutions. But the big thing is, is if you have a complaint, like you mentioned, that comes in, um, what is the service level agreements with departments to make sure that they're addressed within a time that we all agree to? And how is that circulated back, um, to the resident, to the complainant in terms of a closing the loop on that? And, and how is that being addressed, including the garbage and, and, and parking and everything? So that solution is being developed as we speak and has been for a little while now. And hopefully, when, once we have a completed strategy in place, then we'll be able to communicate more in terms of how that looks and, and deployment of it.
Okay. I really thought there was more, um, 311 had, um, presented a while ago about, uh, some unique solutions in terms of technology that they were, um, they were going to be implementing. So hopefully, um, hopefully it's coming soon and, and we can hopefully, um, fix some of those issues, as you say, Commissioner. Um, Alex, thank you for that. Um, the other, I have a motion that I'll be bringing for you, uh, forward. I'm not going to bring it forward today. It's not quite clear, but I'll set it up a little bit. Hockey is, um, outdoor rink hockey is exploding in Heartlake. The, it's, there's communities that are now, you know, there's arguments that are happening, which is unfortunate. It's a good problem to have, but there's arguments because, uh, it's just too, it's too busy. It's, um, which is, which is great, but, um, which means we need, we need something else. Um, especially in Heartlake, uh, not a lot of, uh, support and enhancement has gone into, into Heartlake. Um, so I, I'm going to be bringing forward a motion to put forward a new, uh, ice rink, uh, turf field in, uh, Sandalwood and Conestoga area. Um, myself and Councilor Barr have to, uh, talk about it a little bit and, um, and then I'll, I'll bring it forward at a, at a later date. Maybe have you look it over, Commissioner, first prior to. And those are, uh, those are my questions. Thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, um, Deputy Mayor Singh.
Thank you. And, um, my question is, um, well, first of all, thank you for all the work. And, uh, I was reading through, uh, the budget and, um, I just, I, I guess I'm, I'm, this is for my information as well. When we have a capital project, um, we either finance it obviously through the tax base or the DC reserve. How do you decide which one gets financed out?
So, uh, through the mayor, so I think the funding source, we work with finance, but typically if it's a, a new asset, it could be through development charges, uh, parks related. It could be through cash in lieu of parkland, uh, whereas if it's a replacement, we're replacing a playground, that would come from the tax reserve.
Okay. And how many type of DC reserves are there for community centers or recreation? Is it, that's all I know about cash in lieu of parkland. Is there another one as well? How's that broken up?
Through the mayor, and I'll let Mark add if I say anything mistakenly, but I believe there's just the one recreation DC fund that funds.
Plus the cash in lieu of parkland.
Plus cash in lieu of parkland, yes.
Okay, and how much is sitting right now in both of those?
Through the mayor, just let, uh, Mark get the exact number.
Sure.
Cash in lieu was somewhere in the 50 million vicinity, but we'll let Mark confirm.
I, I couldn't find it.
So the DC reserve is negative 113 million in recreation and 64 million of cash in lieu, uh, parkland.
So what does that mean by negative 100, like, uh, how, how do you have a reserve that's negative?
Yeah, through the chair, so, uh, development in municipalities typically happens in advance of the taxes coming in or the development charges coming in from the community. So we're actually investing more than we've received, and this is a, the standard process in municipalities. So we're actually investing more than we've received and this is a standard process in municipalities.
Okay, so you're waiting for those to be collected from new development?
Waiting for those to be collected and the test we typically use is we don't go further negative than ten years of collections.
Okay. So I'm assuming you work with planning on that. You look at what application, what residential units are approved and then you determine what type of DCs you can anticipate and then you spend accordingly. Is that kind of how it would work?
Yeah. The, so the, the building permits don't necessarily translate exactly into what we expect. We, we usually use a historical average.
Okay.
Along with the DC studies, those really inform the projects that we're doing and when we expect to collect, but definitely the building permits are a part of it, but it's not exactly tied to say.
So it's not one to one?
Yeah, yeah, it's not one to one.
Okay. And then cash in lieu, you said we have fifty million?
Sixty four million.
Sixty four million, okay. And then how do you distinguish between, okay, if I have, for example, what councillor Plesch is saying, right? I guess it's an existing park you want to add, okay? How would you determine, I'll add a nice, how would you determine if you're going to go the tax base for that or DC reserve? Because it's, it's an extension because it's a new, new addition, like how, because we have something similar, Meyer, that's why I'm just giving that example. Like, how do you distinguish that?
Maybe I'll start and let Mark add in, but typically if it's new, we would use DCs.
Is the whole thing brand new or just like, so for example, this is new addition?
If it's for the portion of the amenity, if we were up, if we had a bigger project and we were replacing a playground with it, that would be tax reserve funded, whereas the new amenity would be DC or potentially CIL funded.
Yeah, if I can just tell that, there, there's some requirements on specific reserves. So for example, if we're building a brand new rec center.
Yeah, that's a.
It may be ninety ten, where ten percent has to come from existing taxpayers. It's called benefit to existing and then ninety percent can be funded through DCs. When we're revitalizing or expanding an existing facility, typically look at the square footage and what is the growth of that and then the existing is tax funded and then the growth portion would be development charge eligible.
Okay.
And then any, anything that is eligible would follow the criteria of that, of that DC reserve.
Okay, okay. And, and cash in lieu is only to acquire new parkland, correct? Cash in lieu of parkland because is that what that funded, that sixty four million, I believe you said? That's to acquire new lands for additional park because some developer decided to do less and had to pay us, right?
Also, like some, also some developments on the park, so certain new like facilities on the parks or so on, we are also eligible for this.
For cash in lieu?
Yeah, but they're limited and we have to check one by one whether they're eligible or not.
Okay. Okay, those were just my questions. Thank you for answering them.
Okay, thank you Deputy Mayor Singh. I don't see questions. You can sit down for now, Commissioner Boyce, until I'm sure more community service questions will come up. I understand that our planning commissioner is ready to, good presentation? Which one do you want to do next? Okay, transit is in everyone? Okay, Alex, you're up next. Heidi, Heidi, sorry, I'm sorry. So I used to call in Alex for that.
Okay, good morning, everyone. Mayor Brown, members of council, everyone who's attending today. I'd like to begin with extending my sincere thanks to the staff who have worked diligently on preparing this budget. There's dedication and hard work have been invaluable. I know we talked about all the hours that went into that. That is definitely with these teams. And I am confident that the proposed budget reflects our shared priorities and our needs of the community. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. Thank you. The departmental overview, so Brampton Transit is responsible for the city's primary public transportation system, which includes operating and maintaining our service fleet, facilities, terminals, shelters and bus stops. Our goal is to keep our, our assets in a state of good repair. And the city also wants to make sure that our transit system is reliable, safe for employees and our customers and is an industry leader. Next slide, please. We put this slide in just to give you an overview of what Brampton Transit looks today. This is, a big part of this is just the ridership and, and how much growth we're experiencing within transit. It provides us just a snapshot. Currently, we're the third largest public transit system in Ontario and our ridership is tracking in for twenty twenty four at forty five million rides. We're just finalizing our ridership numbers, but that's what we're looking at, which is significant and I can't say it again about being the leader in recovering from the pandemic in terms of ridership. We're forty percent pre-pandemic ridership numbers. Next slide, please. Our budget goals. So our primary goal for the twenty twenty five budget is to increase service levels and frequency to help meet the growth for Brampton's population and ridership. To do this, we need to, and Mark mentioned a lot of this information, but just to dive in a little deeper, we need to add additional service hours, add frontline staff. We need to acquire buses to meet ridership and service growth, not just for twenty twenty five, but twenty twenty six and onward. Maintain transit assets in state of good repair. And as well as continue to advance transit projects that support council's corporate strategic plan priorities. And most importantly, secure funding, external funding. We continue to do advocacy and we appreciate council's support in doing that as well. Next, next slide, please. Budget drivers. So as I mentioned, we need, our service is just, the numbers are incredible. So we need to maintain current service levels as, as well as put new service in to help meet the ridership demands. We are leading in the GTA in recovery and growth. And from a financial, from a financial perspective, I think the mayor said it, times are tight. We have operating costs that are incredibly high. They've increased. We need to, we need to repair and maintain our assets, our vehicles, our buses. Fuel's gone up as well, so there is slight increase in that. Bus prices, bus prices, we're seeing the highest we've ever seen and lead times are even very, very long. So we're looking at even twelve to eighteen months, even twenty four months, depending on what type of bus we're ordering. Funding, as far as capital and operating funding, we need to, we need, we need funding for buses. Okay, next slide, please. So what this means from an operating budget, these are the highlights we need and Mark did mention this. Fifty two thousand proposed service hours, which is a three point four percent increase. This means that we will need new positions, all frontline positions to support the service increase. That's four transit, forty four transit operators, six mechanics and six other support staff. And the support staff would be a super supervisors who work in dispatch, control and on road. They're frontline supervisors as well as general service persons, three of them. And they're, they're there to clean the buses and fuel the buses. At this point, we're not recommending a fare increase. Next slide, please. This again is just a high level and just showing you that the budget that we're proposing is, will be a two point seven five million net impact. This includes six point five, six point five seven million for the new service and then two million for vehicle repairs and maintenance, as well as minor increase like I mentioned before on fuel. That's offsetted by the, the revenue that we anticipate at the five point nine six million in revenue just from, just the growth that we're experiencing currently as well as the growth that would be, we would have with the new service in place. Next slide, please. This is, this is explaining, this is explaining our expenditures and revenues. It's very busy, but I guess what to take from this is just you can see where we're getting our, where, where we're spending our money and how we're getting funding for the expenses. And so looking at the expenditures, the majority is salary, wages and benefits. You can see that there's utilities and fuel, repairs and maintenance. Financial services would include things like our presto or fair media where we have to pay commissions on that. Office and administration would be uniforms, any type of licensing that we need. And, and, and then as far as revenues, you can see that where we're getting our, our funding from. User fees would be fair. And grants and subsidies would be provincial gas allocation. And then you got your property tax. So next slide, please. So capital budget highlights. So what this means, moving on to capital, is that we're asking for thirty six buses, twenty six replacement buses and eleven growth buses in service. So what's important to know about the growth, growth buses is that although we have to order them in twenty twenty five and we won't be seeing them in service until twenty twenty six, and that's back to that lead time that I talked about. We're also continuing to invest in state of good repair and other priority transit projects initiatives. And we are looking at state of good repair in terms of transit preventative maintenance and shelter refurbishments. And then we have transit innovation, which is just, we're, we want to use this to explore, implement and evaluate new and emerging technologies. Just, there's so much out there now and the idea is to make transit more efficient, using technology to help make it more accessible, also to get rid of vehicle trips. So looking at first mile, last mile is an option. And then of course the LRT and this combines with the Hazel McCallion line as well as the, the extension, the tunneled version. Next slide, please. This is our capital budget overview, just tying everything in to show you from a percentage perspective. So this slide is a high level breakdown and it's, it's what we're asking for in terms of, what's really important to see here is that three quarters of the twenty twenty five capital program is funded by external funding. The remainder is funded by the transit levy and tax base. Next slide, please. Okay, so my last slide is just so we don't forget all the projects, although we didn't, we're not looking at this from an operation and a capital perspective, but these are our ongoing projects that we're either advocating for funding or supporting or we already have the funding and like the third facility, for instance, is something that we're working to build. So advocating for funding for the LRT extension, the tunneled option, the Queen's BRT and transit electrification. And then we're supporting Hazel McCallion line as well as Go Transit. And then funding secured and working on, which are big projects that the transit team is working on is the, with the city corporately, the third transit facility, downtown transit hub, zoom service expansion and higher order transit. Thank you. Thank you.
Councillor Plesch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not going to be able to take that story. I'm so sorry. Thank you very much for the, for the presentation. Going through a little bit of the twenty twenty five budget and then pulling out the twenty twenty four budget and then the differences of the numbers. And I, I realize that we're always looking to the future and trying to, I, I assume every department has that crystal ball and we're all grabbing, you know, what the future's going to look like, but it's not specific and it's not precise. But I do want to ask about some of the numbers that were speculated in twenty twenty four for twenty twenty five. New buses, we were at eighty nine million was going to be the potential ask or speculation. And this year, when twenty twenty five rolled around, it's only at fifty five million. So a significant decrease in the number. Can I get an explanation as to why, why that, the massive variance there? And then for shelter refurbishment, I think? No, bus refurbishment, we have zero dollars in this budget, but we had speculated in twenty twenty four for twenty twenty five fifteen million.
I'm going to start and then I, through the chair, I'm going to start and then I might lean on Ryan to help with the, the bus purchasing. So we've had to reevaluate what, what our resources are in terms of buses, right? I mentioned the lead times, it takes a while. We also, we plan, we order our buses in advance, so we're ordering twenty twenty four buses for twenty twenty five. So through COVID, we were a little bit behind. So you can see that we had, we hadn't purchased the equipment we had. We're now catching up. So, but in saying that and catching up and ordering it, putting money towards it, we're still a little bit behind. I don't know if that answers your question.
Yeah, there's always an explanation. I'm just, from eighty nine million down to, down to fifty five million was somewhat of a big jump and that's where, where I was curious. But then the bus refurbishments, we speculated fifteen million we were going to need and that went to zero dollars. But like yourselves, you're just presenting this to us today. We're just, we just received this. I'll throw it out there and see if you can come back with something a little bit more precise. That would be good. I'll move on to my, I think my final, my last question and that's transit innovation. I need more of, I need more examples. I need you to dive into transit innovation a little bit. And I want you to, because the things you had talked about in transit invitation isn't something that we're just starting. We've always been doing that and I think that's what's been fantastic about yourself in transit. So moving that, where was that moved from? Where was, where was it before in the twenty twenty four and past budgets? Because I looked and there was nothing.
Okay. Through the chair, absolutely. We can get back, can we get back to you on that?
Sure, absolutely.
What our plan is and what some of the examples are.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, councillor Plesch, if you want, we can get in memo format as well, but I think Alex was sort of signaling that he wanted to add in on the refurbishment? Or no, you want it in memo format?
I would like a memo format.
Okay. Okay, councillor Vasante.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Thanks Heidi for the presentation. I know that prior, and you pointed out that the pandemic did kind of cause a lot of, you know, break in some of the planning. With regards to zoom lines across the city, I know that prior to the pandemic, we were adding a zoom line on average one a year. Do we have anything planned for this year and what could we expect, say, in the more near term, next two to three years in terms of zoom expansion? Can you speak to that, please?
Okay, so, so yes, things were delayed, although we were able to launch, you know, the service that we need. As far as zoom line service goes, these, the service that we're implementing right now, for the growth buses will, will be part of zoom service. So we're not, we're not exactly sure where, whether we're going to be able to launch lines or just enhance what we have. We really have to look at that because times are tight. We need to make sure that, you know, we're not just asking for all the service that we can't use. We're noticing a bit of decline in ridership. It's more steadying off, but we know that we need to, we need to implement those zoom lines. And that's Chinkoozie zoom line. We're looking at, also I had mentioned in the last slide, things like studies, so the Steels Corridor, things like that. We're all just trying to figure out like what is the best way and where to put our resources. And that will tell, we will find that out through looking at our ridership ongoing. And then once we have a more solid plan because of things changing, we'll bring it back to council.
All right. And perhaps on the same vein as providing an update to members through a memo format, would you be able to get as information on on what the threshold is for when we begin to need or desire to upgrade to Zoom level service? And what the ridership is on our, let's say, our five heaviest-use non-Zoom lines that we have today? How close are they to that threshold that would demand for an upgrade to Zoom service? And what might be our plan to get them upgraded in the near future?
Okay.
Please. Not now, but perhaps in a memo.
Through the chair. I will, and I'll include just our tentative plan that we're working towards, whether we need, like, what's in place right now, and then include all those numbers as well.
Amazing. Thank you.
Thank you, Heidi. I'm going to suggest that before starting another section, that we take a lunch break, and then we'll come back and tackle Public Works and Engineering. So what time would council want to come back at? So say 12:30. Yeah, 12, come back here at 12:30, okay? Thank you.
Hi there, it's Counselor Santos checking in virtually. Can you hear me?
You're coming through clear.
Counsel, it is 12:31. We said we'd be back at 12:30. We're going to continue with our departmental presentations. And next up on our list is Public Works and Engineering. And Counselor Tor has a question before we start. Counselor Tor.
Thank you through you, Mayor Brown. I don't want to miss the opportunity today to embarrass one of my colleagues and wish him happy birthday. Happy birthday, Deputy Mayor Singh.
And I just note that, what a special way to celebrate your birthday by spending, spending the day in budget deliberations. And he's also fasting, so I can't think of what a, what a beautiful way to celebrate your birthday. Deputy Mayor Singh. Okay, next up is Public Works Engineering. Peter, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor Brown and members of council. It's my pleasure to have the opportunity today to present the proposed 2025 Public Works and Engineering budget. I do want to extend my sincere gratitude to our entire team for their hard work and collaboration, including our partners in finance in preparing this comprehensive budget, and also to the Chair and Vice Chair, Counselor Vicente and Counselor Keenan, for their continued support and leadership for Public Works and Engineering at the City of Brampton. We can go to the next slide. Now, the Public Works and Engineering Department is comprised of four divisions, which include our building design and construction team, who deliver new facilities and major renovations across the city; our capital works team that manages large infrastructure projects, including major road, bridge, and sewer construction; our facilities operations and maintenance division that ensure all city facilities are safe and well-maintained; and our road maintenance operations and fleet team that ensure the city's roads and traffic signal network, as well as our vehicles remain in a state of good repair while ensuring public safety. In 2025, we're excited to highlight several key initiatives. These include a new winter control contract to enhance winter operations management, the construction of new recreation centers across multiple locations, significant road construction projects to improve connectivity and capacity, as well as fleet vehicle replacements to modernize our operations. We can go to the next slide. Now, the Public Works and Engineering budget reflects the strategic priorities and will prepare the city for future prosperity and stability by supporting our community's health and well-being through advancing the design and construction of recreation centers and community spaces; by providing strong government and leadership through professional project management for construction projects and ensuring safety and security at city-owned buildings; by ensuring environmental resilience and sustainability by improving energy efficiency in city facilities to meet GHG reduction targets; and replacing gas-powered fleet vehicles with electric and hybrid vehicles to further lessen our carbon footprint; and by improving transit and connectivity by implementing the Active Transportation Master Plan, delivering major capital infrastructure projects such as new roads and bridges; improving safety through important initiatives such as the expansion of our automated speed enforcement program; and by providing first-class winter maintenance services. Go to the next slide. Now, there are certain key factors that drive the Public Works and Engineering budget, and they include adhering to legislative requirements, including compliance with asset management regulations, minimum maintenance standards for municipal highways, AODA standards, and the Environmental Assessment Act. Aging infrastructure is also a critical consideration, and this budget will ensure that the city's infrastructure and facilities are maintained in a state of good repair and that we can build new facilities in municipal infrastructure to meet the growing demand. And with the City of Brampton being one of North America's fastest-growing cities, population growth and urban development is also a key focus within our budget proposal with important initiatives aimed at moving people more efficiently while simultaneously increasing public safety and security while ensuring environmental sustainability. There are also obvious economic pressures impacting both our operating and capital budgets. And one key to ensuring efficiency in the delivery of our services is to continue leveraging technological advancements. And through this budget, the city is making investments in important technologies such as our new advanced traffic management system, new traffic system detection technologies, new traffic intersection cameras to keep traffic moving and improve security, and replacing our aging fleet with economical and with more environmentally friendly and energy-efficient vehicles. Go to the next slide. Now, on this slide, I'm pleased to outline the key priorities and constraints associated to our operating budget. These priorities include the continued expansion of the city's automated speed enforcement program to improve traffic safety, effectively managing security at city-owned properties and facilities, delivering winter maintenance operations to ensure public safety across our road network, ensuring city facilities are safe, well-maintained, and in compliance with all provincial regulations; implementing traffic camera technology at 50 intersections throughout the city; and advancing the city's sustainable fleet strategy. Now, we do face certain constraints, including funding and capacity limitations that can challenge our ability to meet competing demands; the long-term replacement of aging infrastructure, which will require a continued focus on strategic planning and investment; and balancing service-level demands and stakeholder expectations with available resources. But we believe that this budget puts us in a position to successfully meet these challenges. We can go to the next slide. This slide provides an overview of the proposed operating budget for Public Works and Engineering. It includes expenditures in the amount of $105.7 million. And you can see in the table, if we look at column four, that this is offset by approximately $7.1 million in revenues and recoveries, resulting in a net operating budget of $98.6 million. Now, despite inflationary pressures and service demands, the base budget increase is limited to $7.5 million, or 8.3%, as shown at the bottom of the last two columns. And this is primarily due to a new winter maintenance contract, which was just implemented, which makes up $7.1 million of that variance. So we've worked very diligently to balance the inflationary and growth pressures in various operating accounts. So again, when we're looking at the $7.5 million variance between the 2024 and 2025 budget, it's mainly due to the new winter maintenance contract. Council's investment in this area is key in ensuring that the city's road network can be effectively maintained throughout the winter months and helps ensure the safety of our commuters and residents. We can go to the next slide. Now, this slide highlights some key Public Works and Engineering capital projects. These projects will be instrumental in both addressing growth and driving future growth, improving safety, mobility, and enhancing efficiencies and positioning us for future success. These key projects include the construction of the Embolden Community Center, the Embolden Library, the Howden Community Center, various facility repair and replacement projects. It also includes some major road reconstruction projects, including Williams Parkway, Countryside Drive, Goreway Drive, Heritage Road, McVeigh Drive, as well as continued investment in road resurfacing across the city. In addition to this, other highlights include replacement of city vehicles, new street lighting infrastructure, as well as facility inspection and audits and security upgrades. We can go to the next slide. Now, the department is instrumental in advancing road and transit infrastructure, enhancing active transportation options, and promoting investments in community facilities, safety, and eco-friendly initiatives for a healthier and more sustainable city. As outlined in the previous slide, the Public Works and Engineering Department plays a pivotal role in supporting the Brampton 2040 vision and advancing multiple term-of-council priorities. The 2025 draft capital budget is set at $136.2 million, with a five-year capital plan totaling $788.9 million. And the table breaks down the details associated with each division and over the five-year horizon period. And we believe that we're well-positioned to deliver this plan over this time period. We can go to the next slide. Now, this slide is actually a complete list of our referred matters, and staff continue to work diligently on addressing each of these items within the timelines identified. The fifth item listed pertains to the expansion of the leaf vacuum program. This matter was referred to staff on November 27th last year. Staff is currently conducting a full review and developing options for consideration with respect to expanding the program, and we will report back in the spring with those options for council's consideration. And with that, that concludes our presentation and happy to take any questions at this time.
Okay. Counselor Torres, first up.
Thank you. Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Peter, for that presentation. I haven't had the time to go through it thoroughly. I think I found the line item I was looking for. But just to confirm, for the Countryside Drive improvement, like, for that area there, I think especially for the Phase 1 of it, we have that in this budget here, right?
It is. It is included in the budget. It's $18 million.
Does that also include that the last motion that I had brought forward for Countryside to consider having a, I can't remember the word, but having that additional amount to see if we're going to extend Phase 1 a little bit?
Through the chair, Counselor Tor. It does, it didn't, it does include a 100-meter extension, which will facilitate what was raised at that committee meeting.
So it includes that, right?
It does.
Excellent. Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Plushy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks, Peter, for...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks, Peter, for the presentation. Just a couple of questions in relation to, we can start with Environmental Education Center that you have in here for 2027. I just saw it and I lost it. Is the money in there for 2027, assuming that that's when we're going to start building? And why aren't we starting to build in 2026?
Correct. So through the Chair to Counselor Pleschey, we've begun the design process right now. That money was earmarked for 2027 based on essentially a two-year design timeline and then construction in 2027. If we expedite, if we manage to expedite the design of the Environmental Education Center, we can come back and see if there's any opportunity to expedite that and tender it a little bit earlier, and we'll work with our corporate finance team at the time to see whether that's possible.
Okay. And it's easy enough to do. It's, it's, it's a year, years' budget away. The other question that I had was Heritage Road widening, and I think I recently had sent a message to staff asking about when this was happening, and I, I was under the impression, I think 2027 is when the widening was going to happen, and I see this in there at 2028. That's been on the docket for a while, that, that Heritage Road widening. Can we maybe look at that and get back to, and come back at a later, later time? Noise walls, $11 million for 2026. Any of those noise walls going along Sandalwood?
Through the Chair to Counselor Pleschey, maybe I'll ask our Director of Capital Works to come give some specifics with respect to that.
And I think we were supposed to meet at one time to, to talk about the Sandalwood noise wall. So going back, we were still implementing. We had brought residents out to talk about where the noise walls were going to go along Sandalwood. There was even work started around counting the number of trees and which trees that were going to be saved. There was money, I think, put into a budget. What's, what's happening with that? And is that $11 million any part of the Sandalwood noise walls?
Yeah, through the Chair to Counselor Pleschey, yes, that's correct. We had decent communication with the office, and we have identified that that project warrants the noise wall on Sandalwood Park. So $11 million includes the design and the construction part of that, part of the budget process, yes.
Okay. And for 2026, when did we meet with the residents? 2020?
We had the money for design in 2025, so we're going to design this year. Hopefully, if the design goes well with no complications and utility dedication, which we will do in 2026.
Okay. Why is there $9.8 million for Howden? What's that for?
So through the Chair to Counselor Pleschey, that, that's an older project budget that existed for Howden. It wasn't adjusted. We've now prepared the tender documents, and this top-up is what we believe will be required to basically fund the construction. We anticipate the tender going out later this month, and at that point, we'll, we'll, we'll be able to verify, but it's basically a top-up for, for that project.
Okay. Is it a top-up of the $32 million that was previously budgeted?
Correct.
And in the last budget, I'm pretty sure I took that $32 million and put it towards something else. So how do you still have $32 million? No disrespect to my Bramley counselor down there, but you have, you have more rec centers than anybody else in the, in the City of Brampton. There's rec centers that are looking to be built. There's a still over a billion-dollar backlog just in, in what we're trying to, what we're trying to build. I, I, I just don't understand how Howden, it keeps getting pushed on.
So to, through the Chair to Counselor Pleschey, currently we have a $30.2 million budget for Howden. And as I mentioned, based on our latest estimates, which have obviously been fine-tuned since, or over the course of this year, that, that top-up of, of 9.8 is being requested to basically fully fund the project.
Okay. So can you go back into the last budget and when I took 30 million from Howden and put it over to Embolden to advance Embolden? Can you have a look at, see how, how that happened and how there's 30 million still sitting there?
I think I'm able to help there. I think it was two budget cycles ago, not, so Peter, this might be predate you. But maybe we had the clerk's office pull for a council benefit, that motion. My recollection was it was deferred, not canceled, to put priority on Embolden over Howden, but my memory on that's a little bit foggy too. So I think it would be a benefit for all of us just to find out what the motion was passed to make sure we're being consistent with, with past motions and make sure we can get that to Counselor Pleschey and others by tomorrow. Is that possible?
For sure. Fantastic. Thank you. The road resurfacing program that had recently come to council, we kind of said, hold on, let's, let's relook at this. Is that reflective in this budget? And what are we doing with it?
It is. Through the Chair to Counselor Pleschey, the road resurfacing budget is reflected every year. There, there's a budget for, for 2025. It's, it's approximately $11 million. We are bringing a begin procurement report at the January 29th Committee, and that's going to basically go over the details with respect to the procurement process in terms of how we're going to do that. And we continue to meet with area, local area councils with respect to, to the projects, and there'll be an opportunity for that input. So whatever projects are selected for the resurfacing will be, we'll be meeting with the councils to make sure that there's an alignment there.
Okay. Okay. Thanks, Peter. I guess land acquisitions was, I see that it's posted in here as, as under Public Works, but I always thought land acquisitions was somewhere else. And I guess, why do you have land acquisitions?
Through the Chair to Counselor Pleschey, with any major reconstruction project, as the detailed design is being finalized and the exact limits of the, the exact construction limits are identified, there's often either temporary or permanent easements or just land that needs to be acquired. And then we work in conjunction, you're absolutely right, with our realty team to, to basically purchase that property when required. And there's also obviously scenarios where through the development application process, this, that land is conveyed to the city for, for the, for the construction of the infrastructure.
Okay. But it's mainly, I guess, is there land acquisitions right across the board, and these are the ones specifically more in line of Public Works?
Correct.
Okay, okay. I didn't realize that. Where are, you touched a little bit about the, I guess, the modernization of our, of the street lighting. Where are we with that, the technology? Is there something coming to council soon? How far, and how fast is that going to be rolled out?
Perhaps we'll ask our Director of Road Maintenance Operations and Fleet to step up. He can give a full breakdown of where we are with that project in, in terms of the phasing.
Good afternoon, through the Chair to Counselor Pleschey. We, we have a robust plan over the next five years of different sections that are being designed and constructed. With those, we're looking at aging infrastructure and replacing that with new. With regards to the LED program that's been put on hold through this budget.
LED of street lighting?
Yes.
Okay, but signalization and, and we've been talking about it for way too long, so what do you mean, oh, how is it, how is it being rolled out? Like, what's the stretch? Over how many years? Until the signalization is, is completely used in a way that it's moving traffic that we're happy, like it's, we're, we're talking about next technology? Even, even opportunities to have, you know, AI?
So with regards to the traffic signal system, the ATMS procurement is being evaluated right now. Once that vendor is selected, we will start that rollout process later this year. With that, in conjunction, we've budgeted for advanced system detectors that can go at the intersection. So those are the cameras that have been identified and shared previously. And we have a 10-year program to bring those online at all of the major intersections across the city.
For the cameras?
Yes.
Okay. The, the tender that's about to go out, that's hiring a company to, to take all of our, our, the, all the signals in the City of Brampton and change them to like more of a smart signal?
So the, the tender that's going out is for an advanced traffic management system. That system is, is sort of how all the different components speak to each other. They're all different manufacturers, so this allows us connectivity to all the intersections, us be able to receive alerts from the various components, whether that be a detector, whether that be a radar system, so on and so forth. So it's really the backbone of building that smart system that you're talking about.
Okay. And when can we see all, let's say, all the ducks in a row? It's a, it's a perfect world we live in. Every street light in Brampton is complete. When will, when, when can we see that?
That's likely a, a 10-year project to get everything up and running with smart detectors. The system itself will be up and running starting this year and then into next year. But the detector system, because there's so many intersections, will, will take longer.
How do we, how do we make it faster? How do we have, can we have a faster turnaround? And is it in the tender now that they have 10 years to complete?
The, the tender is, is again for the
Just for the brakes.
System, not for the detectors themselves. The system detectors are a separate capital item, and we've budgeted that throughout the five-year horizon to, to move us towards a, a complete smart system.
Are the detectors the $748,000?
Yes.
Through the Chair to Counselor Pleschey, just, just on that point, once the advanced traffic management system is in place, that gives us the ability, as Shane mentioned, for all the traffic signals to communicate with each other. That's 748,000, which is essentially for hardware at intersections. We're going to obviously focus on, on major intersections. And then we'll look at future budgets, 2026, 2027, to see if we can advance that. And I think at the end of the day, as long as our focus will be on the major intersections, I think that's when you're going to see, you know, that, that system in place and our, our traffic system moving very efficiently. It's not as critical for, for the smaller intersections, which can be programmed basically without needing to change them on a, on a daily basis.
Okay. But for the brains of the, everything is, is, would the tender be complete by, what are we thinking, by the end of the summer kind of thing?
I suspect the tender will be complete by the end of the first quarter.
End of first quarter, okay. Those are my questions. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor Pleschey. Back to Counselor Tor.
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. That also reminds me, just, just want to say thank you on, I see the improvement in the streetlights in some of our areas. We're getting messages from people recently for some of those streets getting completed. So thank you to you and the staff for making that happen. One question, Counselor Pleschey already asked about the noise walls, and just can I ask about the, the Gorway Drive improvements? The almost 17 million that we have for this year and then 13 after and three after. Can you just explain how that's split up and what it means for the actual construction of Gorway?
Sure. And maybe I'll, I'll ask our Director of Capital Works to come provide those details.
Through the Chair to Counselor Tor, for the Gorway Drive section for the drive widening, as you know, we are going from Quartel all the way to Castle, Castlemore, first phase, then we're going all the way to Countryside, and the third phase is moving from Countryside all the way to Mayfield Road. That's the ultimate plan we have. And this number, what you see on the budget proposal, it's also including the CN railway crossing we have on, what, six, seven, and eight, for the great separation of the CN railway to Mississauga and Placidion. So includes of all three contracts. So half of this is, for this year is for top-up also on Gorway Drive, because as we know, we have changes in soil regulations for soil disposals. We are putting a lot of money extra on the soil disposal, because we have a lot of contaminated soil on site. As well as we have, it's also paying for the CN railways for the signals and crossings and the CN great separation. So that's what, for the $16.9 million is for this year. Moving forward, 25, 26, 26, 27, we're also looking for design component for, from Countryside all the way to Mayfield Road. So that's for the going on, all the way to Mayfield Road.
So this year's will get us all the way to Countryside. That, that section gets completed then with this budget?
Through the Chair, yes, that's correct.
Okay. Sounds good. Thank you.
Counselor Pleschey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll start with the Gorway Drive improvements. On one page, you have the 16 million, 16.9 million that Counselor Tor just, just mentioned. And then on another page, you have $10 million, 39,000. And then now I'm seeing in other areas, you have 5.1 million for Howden in one area, 9.8 million, I don't understand. And everything's like interior design services, design services. Where do I look in this budget binder to say, let's, I'll, I'll pick Gorway, because Counselor Power is staring at me. Gorway Drive, how much money is going into Gorway Drive? Or if we have something else in our area, how much money is going into that?
Through the Chair to Counselor Pleschey, maybe see if we can find the exact page where we have the five-year forecast. Just, I don't have the exact page number on me.
I got a PWE 20, PWE 23, PWE 22, and a PWE 26.
PWE 23.
Got a 23, 26.
PWE 23, page 457. We'll have the five-year
I don't have page numbers. I have a PWE 22, where it says Howden Rec Center. And then Howden's mentioned on PWE 26. Gorway Drive's also mentioned on PWE 26, and it's mentioned on where's the 16.9 million?
Through the Chair, Counselor Pleschey, PWE 23 in the upper half of the page, just under environmental assessments and countryside drive improvements.
Yes, 16.9.
Yeah.
And then PWE 26?
So, so Counselor PWE 22 starts the five-year forecast. It shows you up until 26. It shows you all the five years. So you can look at a project and you can see across the five years. Starting in PWE 26, there's individual years. So then it provides the funding source, for example, just for 2025. And then PWE 38 starts 2026. So the first section, five years of all projects, and the next section is by year.
But I'm not talking about the five year. I'm talking about what you have in 2025, 16.9 million dollars. 2026, you have $13 million. 2027, $3 million for a total of 32.9 million. That's five year. Right. So you have the 16.9 for 2025. Then you go to PWE 26. You have the 10 million, but you're splitting it up over five years over the, for the 16.9?
10 million is
That's where the money's coming from. I understand. Yes, thank you. And Howden, same thing. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So looking at council, we have, we've got days set aside all week for departmental presentations. We've gone through three already today. Why don't we save corporate support services for tomorrow? We have time set aside in the schedule. And for a staff planning perspective, it's been raised to me, there may be some regional business on Friday, so we may not use the session time on Friday. I believe that we can get through all the departmental presentations with the time assigned Monday, Tuesday, and Thursday already. And so unless council wants to sneak another one in today. Yeah.
Yes. Counselor Tor.
Thank you again. Sorry, Peter, to bring you back up. I forgot. I just have one last question here as well for the interior design services. I'm just trying to find out like what it's for, but could you just give us just an overview on what that money is for? It's like 5.2 million dollars?
Sure. A, a simple example would be whenever a that needs to be provided, and that, that, that includes those services for all the facilities across, across the city.
Is, that's just the design services, or does that include like the furniture that'll come in, all of that?
It includes, it includes some of that hardware as well.
Do we have a breakdown of the, like, like a, a breakdown of that $5.2 million for this year?
Absolutely.
Like, is that, is that part of this?
It's, we can provide that to you. It's not, it's not in, in the budget binder, but we can provide those details to you.
Okay. If you can, yeah, if you can, let us know, just that where those improvements are going, which places, where's there's new furniture, all of that, just as a memo, I guess, to all council? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So, I need a motion to receive the Transit, Community Services, and Public Works and Engineering reports, moved by Counselor Powers, seconded by Counselor Tor. All those in favor? Motion carries. And so, we have set aside time tomorrow afternoon as well, and so procedurally to the clerk, we wanna pause. We're not adjourning, we're pausing the meeting until 2 o'clock tomorrow.
That's right, Mayor Brown. We'll recess now and reconvene tomorrow at 2 PM.
Good. Okay. Thank you, members of council, for your time and consideration today.